While it was against the regulations, there's unfortunately, there's nothing that actually comes back to us. But it was our, we have to take responsibility for being late in getting this done. So, that being said, I think we do owe a fair evaluation to Mr. Cedidino. I mean, everybody really has talked a lot. But I think, since he did waive his rights, and in the, to be transparent, we can, I can just, I can talk about some of the things in summary? Okay. So, as Mrs. Mongan said, it was a process that we all filled out, there's standards that every superintendent has that we rated Mr. Cedidino on. I mean, I think many people here talked about what they have witnessed as a parent, as a student, as an alumni. I can really speak to all of those, except being a student here, but you know, my children are students. And it's not necessarily just how he interacts with all the students and the staff, but this year, being on the board, I had a different perspective than I never had. And the complexities that we have in our district are insurmountable, you know? I come from the private sector, I think that's difficult. There is nothing more difficult than dealing with state government and bureaucracy to get things done. The things that we think should be very simple to do are usually regulated. So, there's great complexity in the administration and the leadership of our district. But what I would like to say is, just a summary, so you all know what our evaluation was, is that of the number of different lines that we had to evaluate the superintendent on, it was a rating scale of exceeds, meets the requirement, on the, needs improvement, unsatisfactory, or not evaluated. As a whole, the board rated Mr. Cedidino as exceeding expectations, I'm sorry, meeting or exceeding expectations in 236 of the total 261 observed areas of rating. So, that's just over 90 percent. So, I think that's important, that the public understands that that's really what our rating was. And, you know, I'm sure we'll talk a little bit more, but as you see, you know, his actions that you all see, we also see, and while it's not optimum to do this at this meeting, we do have the obligation to give him his six months' notice. And I think that what we rated and what you see is a true representation of his leadership and the direction that our board is going.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Any other board members?
Yes, Mr. Solakowski. I'd just like to, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Mongan and Ms. Ellis Foster for their points that they made. They're spot on with all of their points regarding the timing of the evaluation, as well as Ms. Ellis Foster's comments regarding Mr. Cedidino deserving a fair evaluation. And I believe that he got a fair evaluation. I think he's doing a wonderful job. I will be voting yes on number 15, and I'll explain some reasons why. Thank you, thank you. I'll get into my reasons why in a few minutes. But when I say fair evaluation, you know, I truly mean fair, right? I think an evaluation process is important to any staff member, to any employee, because it's supposed to highlight their strengths, so that they can continue to build on their strengths. But it's also supposed to identify their weaknesses, so that they can identify how to get them, make themselves, and in this point, Mr. Cedidino making the district even better than it already is, right? He needs to continue to make it better every day. And a lot of the conversation that we had on December 5th was getting into a lot of the strengths and the weaknesses. And I think some people take offense to some of, you know, the comments towards the weaknesses, but, you know, I think that it's, we're doing a disservice to Mr. Cedidino, as well as to the district, if we're not highlighting how we feel we can get even better, you know? And I know that Mr. Cedidino feels the same way, because for anybody, and I've said this about him constantly, if anybody ever listens to Mr. Cedidino, I'm sure you've all heard him say dozens of times, that the largest room in any organization is the room for improvement. And I don't believe that Mr. Cedidino just says that. I actually truly believe that he believes it. So, we all know what many of his strengths are, communication being probably his biggest strength. And anybody that's ever heard me speak, you always hear me speaking about parent involvement. And one of the things that I constantly heard people saying when they got up at that podium was about how approachable he is. And to me, that's the number one point that I see in Mr. Cedidino. Before I was a board member, I used to come to meetings to speak out, and I was, you know, one in just a handful of people that would speak out, because we had had a superintendent that was not approachable. And here you have a man who parents feel that they can come out and they can speak to him. And he has a way about diffusing the situation, and he's honest and he's true to them when he speaks to them, about getting in touch with him and making sure that their concerns get addressed. And I feel that this district has gotten to a place where parents feel that they can really truly be involved, not just in their classroom, but in the district. And I think that that's what's making our district that much better. You know, we know how he leads his administrative team, how he builds character in the district. Some of the weaknesses, what I would say, is I would like to see a better plan. I would like to, and this is more of a district issue than a personal issue for Mr. Cedidino. I think our district, for years, has failed on being able to put out a long-term plan. But as the leader of the district, I'd like to see him get a little bit more of a grasp on that and begin to lead our district. So, with that, I'll just leave that at that, but, you know, I do feel that our district is in a better place, and we, but we need to continue to strive to be even better every single day.
Thank you, Mr. Borcelli. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
You know, the other board members that have already spoken have all said wonderful things. The board did drop the ball in terms of timing. I agree 100 percent with Ms. Mongan that tonight should not be the night that we should be doing this. However, in a timely fashion, Mr. Cedidino's superintendent's evaluation should have been done in June. It was not. There are a variety of reasons for that. His contract does say that he needs to know by December 31st. Anytime in the last few months, we could have taken care of that as well, and we did not. But for those of you who either watch at home, if you can hear it, or come to the board meetings, you will know that almost at every meeting, I said, "We are in noncompliance. We need to get this done." And I was ignored. And I kept saying, at every meeting, "We need to get this done." And had we done that, we would not be here with all of you, with all of your emotions all up in here at this time. And that's really a shame, and shame on us for that. One of the other things is about goal setting. The board is supposed to set goals. We're still working on last year's goals, because we didn't set new ones. Mr. Cedidino was supposed to set goals. We didn't get to that either. Again, variety of reasons for why that has happened, and it shouldn't. And I will be very diligent to make sure that does not happen, that kind of tardiness happens in the future. One of the other things everybody keeps saying is, "There's always room for improvement." And that's true. What, one of the few things I really do not like about the superintendent's evaluation format, because it's a template, is the categories that you have to choose. There's a place for you to comment and expand on your thought process, but a lot of it is, you know, just a checkmark. And instead of saying "shows improvement," it says "needs improvement." So, you know, it depends on if it's the half glass full or the half glass empty. There's always room for improvement. However, we need to look at the baseline, and in every single category, there's no way anybody could say that we have not shown improvement. So, I, there's nothing we can do about that, but I don't like the wording on that evaluation I have to say that I have been, and I am, a supporter of Mr. Cedidino's. Time and time again tonight, you hear people say, "He's everywhere." I think he's cloned. He's at sporting events, he's at choir, he's at band, he's, and he, he's everywhere. And for those of you who don't know, he's here on sound days and Saturdays sometimes, and over vacation until nine o'clock at night. And Twitter. So, I have to say that I am extremely happy and fortunate to be part of the board event at this point in time, because what I am seeing leaps and bounds in progress is phenomenal. And I'm Obridge proud, and I am a vote yes for Mr. Cedidino.
Mr. Solakowski, if I may?
Yes.
Mine will be real short. This school district is probably in the best shape it's ever been in the 21 years that I've lived here. And obviously, we owe a big part of that to Mr. Cedidino. Thank you, everyone who spoke on his behalf tonight, but just so you know, you didn't sway me. I've been a definite yes the whole time. Thank you.
Can I say something, Mr.?
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming here tonight. Your presence means a lot. It means that we all want what is the best for our children. Good school system, good education, and good future. You may have entered this room with different opinions, but I, I'm hopeful that we leave this room with handshakes and hugs. When I was elected for this board, I didn't take this as a victory. I took it as an assignment, or as a responsibility to serve our community. I have always tried to do what's the best for my community, and no one, I mean, no one has ever influenced me politically. Everybody is entitled to have opinion, and it is so fundamental, right? It's a sign of healthy society and a healthy democracy. Even when we're watching a game, football or baseball, we all know that players are professionals. They are the best, that's why they are there for. They have passion for the game, and they have required skills to win the game. But still, somewhere on the sidelines, there will be criticism and comments about their performance. And a superintendent is not only a player, he's a captain too. He doesn't have just the game time, he has to work 24/7. It is a tough job that requires a lot of patience and hard work. Mr. Cedidino took this district about more than two years ago. I believe it was not a turnkey operation. And he has to work a lot. And he has brought this district to a different and improved level with his judgment, diligence, passion, and hard work. And I observed Mr. C. for two years. Here's my opinion about him. He is all by respect as a visionary leader and a team player. He has a clear vision of our district goals and objectives. He understands our sources and expectation of our community. He is an excellent communicator, which is one of the strongest qualities of an effective superintendent. He maintains a respectful relationship with board. He deals professionally with all the stakeholders. He has good relationship with teachers, staff, and students. He's a good listener. He values and takes into consideration different viewpoints presented to him. I have also seen him taking stand for something that's right, showing he's not afraid of any commitment. He's flexible enough to take collaborative approach, rather than taking confrontal course of action. He is an educator and works relentlessly to improve learning and achievement. So, Mr. C., I'm pleased and honored to give you an A. I'm going to vote yes for you.
Yes, I would like, I have something I would like to say in reference to being able to vote for Mr. Cedidino. Unfortunately, I will not be able to do that, because I have a conflict, because I have a relative that works in the school district. But I must say, as far as his evaluation was concerned, I also was not part of it. And I was upset over it, because in years back, I've been on the board probably longer than anybody here, and I've been through many superintendents. And at one point in time, I was able to vote, but the laws change, and unfortunately, you have to deal with the law. But I must say that, you know, I've been in the school district, I was a student in the school district, I have three children that graduated from the school district, and grandchildren that have graduated, and one that is still there. And when I have my grandsons call me to ask me if they could give me, if I could give them, excuse me, Mr. Cedidino's cell, so that they could continue to contact him while they're in college, okay, says a lot. We have a wonderful set of teachers in this school district. I have been around long enough to be able to tell you from what was to what is today. And it starts from the top and it works its way down. Mr. Cedidino not only does the job that he needs to do as a superintendent, but he goes above and beyond. When you have kids that still want to be in contact after they have left the school district, because of all of the dedication that he has shown to these kids, that speaks for itself. The teachers, I have never heard, in all the years I'm on the board, not one thing that was ever negative in reference to Mr. Cedidino. And like I said before, we have a wonderful set of teachers. I am so glad that the negotiations are over. You deserved everything that you could have gotten, okay? Unfortunately, I couldn't have been a part of that. But it all stems from the boss, the man at the top. I am so glad to hear so many of these board members tonight coming out with positive in reference to Mr. Cedidino. And all of the people that came, from the students, to the parents, to the employees, that speaks for itself, that we have one of the best superintendents that I have ever been around in all the years that I have been in Obridge, okay? It's unfortunate that I have to do a no vote, but I want to explain why. And if I had the opportunity to be able to vote, there is no question in my mind, okay, that this man stands above and beyond what we have dealt with in all the years that I have been involved with the Obridge School District, either as a student, or all the way up to now as a board member. I want to thank the board members that are here, that are going to be voting, and I hope it is unanimous vote, because he deserves it. This man spends more time with our school district, because sometimes I want to have his wife and his children deal with it, but you know what? They love him to death, and they know that this is the personality of this man, that we are putting back in as our superintendent to run our school district for the residents, for the employees, and for the children in our school district. This is why we are sitting here today. You are absolutely right, okay, to make the right decision for all of the people in Obridge. And I just hope you thought that that happens tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. You can have it.
First, I would like to just say that I want to thank him, deeply humbled by the overwhelming support from our parents, staff, my peers, and students, and board, but most of the students. Ms. Levine, you said it right, we are family, and that's what I have gained from this district as extended family, and, you know, nothing can replace that. What I started off in this process with the, my evaluation, it was frustrating at times and caused anger. And there's a story that I told some of the board members during the negotiation process that I just want to recount for you, that I remember I was like, probably around 10 years old, and I was going to a Yankee game with my dad, and we're approaching the George Washington Bridge, and, you know, as you know, it kind of bottlenecked there. And someone didn't like the way my dad moved into a lane, and he used a very well-known symbol to let him know that he didn't like his driving ability. And, you know, I'm offended, I was offended, this is my dad, you're doing that to. You know, I looked at my dad, like, "What are you gonna do?" Because sometimes he would, you know, get really angry and, you know, react. But he looked at me first, and he didn't do anything. So, we kept driving a little further, and there comes a point where you have to decide we're gonna take the upper deck or the lower deck. And I said to him, "What do you think is better today?" And he said, "Today is better to just take the high road." And I never knew what it meant, and so like, you know, I was like, "Why? What is he talking about, the high road?" A few years later, I figured out what lesson he was trying to inspire me today. So, before everyone spoke, I was gonna say, just gonna take the high road, and really not talk about my evaluation, just kind of get through the process, because I know that my family needs to go out, and you all need to shop, and put away the Hanukkah decorations, and take out the Christmas stuff, and everyone has something better to do tonight than to be here at these late hours. But the one thing that I did hear over and over again, I just want to correct everyone on is, you know, that the success does not belong to me, it belongs to everyone that's here, everyone in the community. You know, if the teachers aren't on board, then none of this happens. If the students don't want that respectful relationship with the staff members in the building, then that doesn't happen, and the students don't have that respect if they don't have parents that don't teach that to them. So, that's all on, everyone in this community who's made that possible. So, to me, there's only really one contract really to talk about tonight, and you've already ratified it, and we can move forward. And even maybe next time, we could do a little better job with that one. So, thank you, and happy holidays to everyone.
Okay, I need a motion to move number 15. 14 and 15.
14 does not require action.
Okay.
Just conducting the summary, which you just did.
Okay, number 15.
I will gladly move it.
Okay, I need a second. Hartman will second.
I'm sorry, are we voting on 14 first?
Right.
No.
No, I got, Mr. Park.
You're not voting on 14 at all. 14 is a conference, you just held the conference.
Then I just have a comment on 15 before I vote. I thought we were voting on 14. I just wanted to say that I will be voting yes. I do not think it is in the best interest of this community and this school district to conduct another useless superintendent search, especially with the situation in the state, with the superintendent's salary cap, and the fact that the pool of candidates would not be good or come close to what we have. So, I'm not, I am going to vote yes for those reasons. I don't want another predetermined superintendent search where the outcome is already decided. It really makes no sense for this district moving forward, so I will be voting yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Andriani?
Absolutely yes.
Horcili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Proudly yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hartman?
No vote.
Solakowski?
No vote.
Congratulations, Mr. Cedidino.
Congratulations.
Now go home, make sure your kids did their homework.
Now go home, make sure your kids did their homework. Okay, non-certified personnel transportation, we have one item. I need a motion to move non-certified personnel transportation.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. I need a second.
Anybody will second.
Any discussion?
Single second.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Singh?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Horcili?
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Resolution one passed.
And services, one through two. I need a motion to move supplies, equipment, and services.
Mongan will move.
Any discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Andriani?
Yes.
Horcili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two passed.
Transportation, one through four. I need a motion to move it.
Mongan will second.
Thank you.
I'm a yes.
Any discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Andriani?
I'm a yes.
Horcili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four pass.
Mr. Langus, one through five. I need a motion to move one through five. Mongan will second. Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Andriani?
Yes.
Horcili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Solakowski?
No vote.
Resolution one passed.
Old business, new business, no? Okay, hearing of residents on any school district items. To say something, you can stand on the line there.
Hello, Tim O'Neill, President of the OBEA. I just wanted to say, on behalf of the OBEA membership, we're relieved and pleased to put our difficult round of negotiations behind us, and that we hope in the next round and in the future, there will be a little less contentious and stressful, and a lot shorter than there were this time. And congratulations, Mr. Cedidino.
Just for simple, I just wanted to thank the Board of Education for keeping the children's best interests in mind and voting to renew Mr. Cedidino's contract. And now I can go home and see my daughter, who came home from college today, who I haven't seen yet.
Like I said, I was here to witness greatness, and I did.
Like I said, I was here to witness greatness, and I did. Well done, Board of Education, you guys did a phenomenal job. Mr. Sidedino, congratulations, my friend, and you'll lead us to brighter and better days. Thank you all. And again, Board of Ed, you did the right thing, like Mr. Sasso always says, "Do it the right thing, you did the right thing." Anyone else? I would like to thank everyone for coming this evening, congratulations. You have another three to five years, okay? And, uh, good luck to all of you, and I want to congratulate all the students that received awards this evening during the recognition portion. Good night all, and have a good holiday.
Can I just, can I just say one thing?
Do it good in the air now.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
I, I do, I also want to thank the Board of Education for their faith in me. Um, but I want to thank you for your years of service as a board member, and to Mr. Porcelli, for your years of service to the children of Obridge as board members. Um, you both were there and had your, um, thoughts in mind to be here all the time in a volunteer position, to do the best for the children of Obridge, so thank you.
Very well put. And I want to thank all the board members too, for the 15, 20 hours a week of time that they put into this, and they get paid this much. Okay? Thank you, board members.
Mr. Solakowski? I have something I'd say. Um, just want to let everyone know that tomorrow night, uh, the orchestra show is going on right here. Um, if anybody hasn't seen it, it's always a great show. It starts at seven o'clock with the middle school orchestra, and those kids are phenomenal. Um, and then it's followed by the Obridge High School orchestra, uh, just a terrific show. Um, then I just want to wish everybody happy holiday season. Um, as you're enjoying your holiday season, um, I ask everybody to just remember all of those that are serving overseas. Um, we have a family in our neighborhood, their, their children, they have two children in the school district, one in Salk and one in the high school, and, and the father serves in the reserves, and he's, uh, he's spent a couple of tours of duty overseas, but this is the first one that he's spending, uh, overseas during the, the holiday time. So, you know, it is difficult on the family and, and as a community, we're trying to get together to send some stuff over to pick up his spirits over there. Um, and it really got me thinking that, you know, as, I sit down to a holiday table, as I did at Thanksgiving, and I will again at, at Christmas time, or, or even as I get to get ready to, to kiss my family members that I love, and those friends and family that I love at midnight on New Year's Eve, there are people that are gonna be sitting down to a holiday meal with an empty placemat, uh, empty space at the table, um, because there's somebody overseas. And we have so many of our, uh, Obridge High School alumni that serve in the military as well, so we, we, we certainly have a lot overseas, um, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Borcelli. I need a motion to go into adjournment. I'm gonna move. Thank you, Ms. Mongen, I need a second. Mr. Mayor?
Andriani?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongen?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Resolution to go into adjournment, pass it.